All right, we're going to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And we will, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move into a roll call Conflict of Interest check. Trustee Nolte.
Here, none.
Trustee Abbott.
Here, none.
Treasurer Metz.
Here, none.
Clerk Stambuellis.
Here, none.
Trustee Sanders.
Here and none.
Trustee Sikkenga.
None.
And Supervisor Scott, here and none. We'll now move into approval of the agenda. We do have a slight change to the agenda, and that is we have our closed session minutes that have been passed out at the table. Those are obviously, since they're closed session, they won't be included in the packet, the public packet, but we do need to add them for approval. So I'd like to add those as letter C. So letter C under the consent agenda would be approval of closed session minutes from September 17th, 2025.
I'll move to approve the agenda as with those changes that you just mentioned.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Sikkenga, seconded by trustee Abbott. Any discussion? Hearing none will move into a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. All right, the agenda is approved, and we'll move into our first call for public comment. Just a reminder to ask folks to please state their name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. And actually, I see that we actually just had a couple of guests just walk in, so I'd like to be respectful of their time. We wanted to do a quick introduction of Sergeant Hogan and Lieutenant Kratzenberg from the Washington County Sheriff's Office. They are the new leadership team here for the Western Region and who we'll be working with closely, so we wanted to make sure that they had a chance to say hello and introduce themselves to the board.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. So I'm John. We're pretty informal, so. I was sheriff's office for a little over eighteen years. I will be honest, this is the first time I've been on the west side of the county. I spent my first seventeen and a half years in DFC, and so now I am new out here, even though I'm not new to the agency. So I am learning a ton of stuff as we go along the last couple of months. Outside of West Ops, I oversee our training program, our traffic unit, and our crisis negotiations.
This is John's side. My name is Mike Hogan. I'm a sergeant with the Sheriff's Office. I've been here a little less, just in my ten years. I also yeah, east side of the county. I came over here temporarily back around March, so I've been getting acclimated with the geography and the light roads and whatnot. Twelve-hour shifts. I work from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's rotating shifts, so if you ever need to get in touch with someone on the weekend, I'll leave a couple of business cards around and cell phone in my area.
Mike is our Dexter collaboration sergeant for the past three years. For the timetable, so he's kind of switched in the middle of the year.
Yeah.
Usually, we always switch in the year, but the way it worked out and everything, unfortunately, did happen. Any questions for us?
John, what is your last name again? Okay.
Yeah, it's not even one sound out.
Thank you.
But for us, anything we can answer or you guys normally do a session with like public reports later on?
At the very end, yeah. So that's why, but that's why I wanted to call you up. The board has received them. They received them in their packets. If anyone has questions about those, well, while they're here, we don't have to make you wait till the very end of the meeting, but. Yes, yes.
For today, so you will see us a lot more often. Try to come every month, but if I can't, it's not, is that open, guys? It's because my real boss at home said we had something going on that night probably. I, the area I cover, I have nine board meetings a month, but I just know I can make all nine. But I'm, where the goal is for us to make as many as possible moving forward, just so we can make sure that base the names there and questions and communication lines is there.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, good question. Right here on the road, 7:00 a.m. is 7:00 p.m.
Correct.
Who's on the road after 7:00 p.m.?
So we generally have two sergeants working, the east and the west side. So west side midnight sergeants are Sergeant Pillabuck, the son of Jeremy Hellmark, if anyone's familiar, and then Sergeant Wallace. So they both report on Station Seven. The way we do kind of our, our, the tunes is I'm every other weekend I work. Who's on the opposite of me? Sergeant Pillabuck will be opposite of me. And then Sergeant Kabauer is the other day shift sergeant, so he's now working.
And there are other deputies as a part of the collaboration that are, that are on, so that we have 24/7 coverage.
Day shift sergeant, what's that? On your, our holding in Kabauer, Kabauer's was slightly different. And then we have sergeants on the east side. We have four on the east side, or when one of them on the west side is off, one of them gets shuffled over during the day shift. So it always, we always have two working 24/7.
Thank you, and thank you for taking time to come today to say hello. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your service.
See, you're always going to want to come to our meetings, so.
Yeah, that's how we lure you in. Next, next time there will be more questions.
Oh. They own loose meat at their, at their door, maybe.
Bring us some.
Thank you very much. That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll continue on with public comment. Any other members of the public wishing to address the board? Just come right up to the microphone here and make sure that it's turned on. There should be a button on this. I don't think it is. There should be a button on the side.
It's pull the mic out of the little.
Yeah, it's on the side there.
All right, let's try that again. Is it on? Can you hear me?
There we go. Now we got you. All right. It's for the benefit of the folks watching on, on Zoom.
Okay, I would have had my makeup artist to All right, thank you. My name's Stephen Cronenberg, resident of Pinkney, the greater metropolitan village of Pinkney, out on the dirt road. Thank you for this opportunity. I have just come directly from the ICU at the University of Michigan, where my friend Tamoko Murakami is recovering now, two and a half weeks after her crash October 4th during a bike race, the road to hell, and she was struck on North Territorial Road. I don't want to assign blame to the rider or even to the driver at this point, based on what I understand. But I do feel that there are some measures that we can take to try and prevent this sort of horrific accident in the future. One of them, you know, is that there was no one present to help cross the racers as they're singularly focused on this endurance race to get across a very, very busy thoroughfare, 50 mile an hour suggested speed limit for this east-west corridor. So I do feel that the race organizers failed to provide adequate safety for that event. They did not reach out to the township and to other jurisdictions other than at the start of the race in Chelsea. So that might be something, I don't want to do anything to discourage that sort of event. We want to see more people biking and, and running and things like that, but they were remiss in that. I'd like to see that that becomes a requirement to seek, you know, to inform safety authorities, you know, in all the jurisdictions that's covered in an event like that. It was a 70-mile race. The other is that there is no safe transit from many of our cycling destinations along the border-to-border trail. You know, there are many discontinuities in that trail. And I know there's been a discussion now, probably for decades, of creating a way to link up the area from Dexter, from Hudson Mills, rather, to places like the Pinky Rec area, Silver Lake, or to Pickaroe Lake. And same goes for other routes, you know, not just North Territorial, Dexter, Pinkney, Dexter Town Hall, Dexter Chelsea. These are places where cyclists just can't be kept safe from, you know, high-speed traffic, and there's no shoulder. So there are things that we can discuss, you know, regarding buffers along those streets or just bypasses, but I really would like to see that sped up. Every time I go to Pickaroe Lake where I go trail running, I see people who have biked there, and it scares the daylights out of me for their safety. And you know, we want to create routes where we have keystone species represented, where it's safe enough for parents with young children, for the elderly to feel comfortable riding there, as we have in the border-to-border trail. Right now, we have all these discontinuities and people risk their lives, and it's not enough to just see some, you know, college-age warriors out on the roads, you know, feeling that they're invincible. We have to make it safe for everyone. So in Tamoko's case, she is making some recovery. I'm quite quite amazed at how much recovery she's made, although she has setbacks, and she did have a seizure recently and another brain bleed, but at the moment, she's doing better, and she's actually said a few words to me today. If you could, like, three words in a row. There was slightly slurred. And this is, again, this is an anesthesiologist, highly educated, tremendous endurance athlete. So 72 years old, she's an inspiration, and let's do what we can and work together to make it safe and so that this just doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional members of the public wishing to address the board for our first public comment period? All right, hearing none, we'll move into the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. I'll second it.
It's been moved by trustee Sikkenga and seconded by trustee Sanders. So we'll move into a vote. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. That now brings us to the presentations portion of our agenda, and we are going to talk about our fiscal year 2025 audit with Raina.
Lonnie, should we pass our closed session minutes to?
Yes, the closed session minutes should come back to the clerk. Thank you.
No action for that? Didn't know if I should jump in or not. Good evening. Nice to see everyone. My name is Raina Ammons. I'm a partner with PSLZ, as you know. Happy to be here tonight and see everyone. We do have a very good financial report for the township board. The, the township did receive, once again, the highest level of audit opinion possible, which is an unmodified opinion, so no exceptions, disclaimers, nothing too bad to report to you this evening. Jumping into a few highlights, your largest source of revenue, of course, are property taxes, up 5.8% this year, and that, therefore, you didn't raise any, you didn't raise any tax millages. That's all taxable value increase. So that, that just we like to see that, of course, and see the, see the development within the community. State shared revenue, however, down 1%. Not good news going forward on that. I know you've just received word on projections for the, the subsequent year, based on what the, the budget the state just passed. So I know you're not projecting any big increases for next year. That, of course, is sales tax and income tax that the state collects and distributes to the local units. Interest income, however, we have another significant increase. The year, fiscal year '24 was great. Fiscal year '25, we built on that as well. So we, we were seamless with, we had new treasurer Mets, and thank you, you did a nice job monitoring that and taking advantage of the interest rates. It really, that really moved the needle, so thanks for that. Significant expenditures, really, the two departments that stood out in the general fund are IT services and elections. Elections, of course, you had a presidential election in primaries last year. It was a big year for elections, so expenses were up. Some of those, of course, reimbursed from the state. The, and also capital outlays last year, $847,000. That included road improvements, emergency sirens, and some additions of the, the dry hydrants added on to that. So in total, you actually used about a million dollars out of the general fund fund balance, but that not cause for concern. You planned that. You did planned projects, also transferred a lot of that to the capital improvement fund, which I, I really like that. I like that you're using the capital improvement fund. I think it, it makes more sense when you're budgeting, because the general fund, you could use, you know, look at your operational expenses, and then you could make decisions and, and base priorities on what's going on with the capital improvement fund. So, so nice, nice job with that. So we dipped into general fund fund balance, but our ending general fund fund balance still came in at $3.3 million. The police fund and fire fund remain steady. And lastly, let's talk about the pension fund for a second. Pension fund is fully funded at 95.4%, down just slightly. I mean, if you're going into decimal points, the year before was 96.1, and now we're 95.4. But nothing, obviously, nothing to be concerned about there. The we had pension investment income, which we like to see because that's based on market conditions, so we're happy to see a positive gain in the pension trust fund of $79,000 this year. And that, of course, whether the investments and assumptions impact our funded status as well. So with that, you know, there was a lot of numbers all at once. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Any questions? This is an easy group tonight. I don't know. Maybe they're saving all the hard questions for me later. I don't.
Well, I, I mean, my one, I should, I sent you my one, like, little typo.
Yes, thank you. We'll take care of that.
But the, but the note that I had for Lonnie is that in the, in the audit where you talk about the reduction in the general fund balance, it would be nice, when you just spoke aloud, you talked about the investment in capital and in particular, setting up the capital fund. But, but it'd be nice to see that, and I wasn't sure if that was noted in the, in the audit, and I don't know if it really matters.
So you want the verbiage in there, in the front, for the readers?
Leaving something out, kind of, because, because, yes, the general fund balance decreased, but that was because of policy decisions, policy decisions around capital.
Right, and, and the important thing is, it is a plan. It's not like it just happened and we got to the end of the year and said, oh, jeez, whoops, you know, we spent too much. Nothing like that. Very planned, very controlled, all budgeted for. I think that's very important to note. I think we talked about that in the budget paragraphs in there, but I will note that for next year to, you know, to emphasize the, you know, it's, we take, exactly. It's all the verbiage in the front of the financial statements with the explanation. So thank you. That's actually a very good comment. Thank you.
But I was very pleased with the audit results.
Well, this board has done a lot of things in the last four years. You've accomplished so much, and you really should, you know, take credit for that. And you have a plan going forward. You know, you've got that open space fund now, and, you know, again, you plan for things, you budget for them, and you take action. So it can't be better than that.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Thank you.
Comments?
Do we know what the, what we're losing next year from the state? Do we have a dollar or percentage?
6.8%.
He sent the email today.
Oh, I didn't see that yet. 6.8% we're going to lose?
In consti- statute, statutory revenue sharing, one or the other. Statutory revenue sharing, I believe, is, right? Or is it constitutional? Constitutional statute, or constitutional revenue sharing, 6.8. The projected cuts before the budget was passed was a total of almost 20 between the two.
Do we have a dollar value on that?
Not yet.
But I think the increases in property value will still, I, well, I think it'll be fine, you know, I mean, because there was a pretty big jump up in state share revenue a few years ago, wasn't there? So we've been kind of enjoying.
2%, what has been a big jump for them, for the state share revenue. So, you know, we're happy to see 1%, 2%, as long as it's positive. You know, a negative one, we get once in a while, but again, it's the, you know, it's usually, it's usually a bummer of the economy of sales tax and income tax. However, now they're going to start using that toward the roads and within the state, so stay tuned, I guess, is, you know, they threw a lot of projections out there, but we'll see how it actually, you know, and maybe they'll see if it's hurting the municipalities, you know, a lot of them use it for things like law enforcement, so in public safety, they, you know, you really don't want to hurt the local units. So hopefully, if that won't happen, but if it starts to, maybe they'll take notice of that and try and fix that.
I don't know if you guys saw that there was $650,000 revenue in '24 that we didn't get in '25, and I'm pretty sure that was the ARPA funds were booked in.
Yes.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you to the board. Appreciate you.
Moving on in our agenda, we'll move into our action items. The first is the acceptance of financial transactions from clerk Stambuellis. Is there a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to, to accept the financial transactions.
It's been moved by trustee Sikkenga. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Treasurer Metz. Any discussion?
I just don't think I was quite tracking on the BlackRock Technologies expenses, which total $25,000. What's the, what's the cost to transition to BlackRock?
I, I'm not sure if this is the right one, but I guess we, we save 10% if we pay the monthly fee all at once for the year. So we opted to make a single payment for our monthly fees to save the 10%, which essentially accounts for almost a full month free. So that is, what we were paying monthly for, for Vector is, is roughly the same, and that's, that's the total amount for the year, as opposed to paying it on a monthly basis.
And then and then the cellular connectivity line item of $36,000 is a payment to us for the franchise?
No, that's the payment to finish broadband. That's what we, that's what we authorize to finish the.
Okay.
The Kegelwood Trail.
Yeah.
Which will be done by the end of the year, I heard yesterday.
But then, I don't think the BlackRock Technology should be in the capital fund. If it's just the operating, if it's just the, the service cost, the monthly service cost, that.
Oh, if you're talking about the one in the capital fund, that's the, we've replaced, that was the replacement of all of the computers and monitors.
Here is in the general fund.
So there's two for BlackRock. One is that there's the hardware cost that we put in capital, that we approved in the budget for capital costs, and then there's the monthly fee that is, is essentially the, the, the software cost or the ongoing cost. So the one in the, in the capital fund is all of the computer hardware.
So we replaced all the computers and monitors all at the same time for the town trip?
Yeah. We had to, we had to upgrade the computers for Windows 11 by, I think, November 1st. I mean, there were, like, the supervisor's computer was new from last year, so we didn't, but all the others that had to be upgraded, we did all at once. And BlackRock, I think the other part of that is, as we talked about when we did the, the budget approval, BlackRock was significantly less expensive for that and the server, which the server is also being replaced in the next two weeks, compared to what we were expected to pay to Vector. I think by, by the tune of $15,000 to $17,000. Is that, is that right, Sam? Compared to Vector, the, the replacement cost was something like between $15,000 and $17,000 cheaper to do all of the equipment, the computers, the installation, and the server. Any other questions? Those are good questions. All right, hearing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. We'll move into action item B, which is the fiscal year 2026 budget amendments. There is actually a printout on the desk in front of you that is a slight change. We found out today about one of our other dues items that was not included in the original here. So there is also, if you'll look, the change from what's in your packet is a $2,000 addition to the dues line in general government. And those are the dues for Watts. They were paid for the previous year, but not for this year, and weren't included in this list. So the changes that you'll see here are the health insurance change, which we've talked about several times in, in reports, and knew we were, knew that they were coming. And then the additional one is for Watts. You'll also see that we are moving when we, when we first discussed whether or not we were going to pass healthcare, we included the total amount that we had budgeted for healthcare, but it's actually spread across two departments. So you'll see that this is a change there as well. So we're subtracting $7,000 in the planning and zoning administration line and adding the additional to the line under general government, adding that seven and an additional amount of $22,800 plus that $7,000 for an additional amount under the general government line. Is there a motion? I guess I should have done that before I explained all that. Sorry about that.
Guys, I don't want to make all motions.
Well, I moved that we accept them.
It's been moved by trustee Abbott.
Support.
Oh, look at that. Supported by clerk Stambuellis. Now it's a race. Any additional discussion? Or questions? All right, hearing none, we'll move into a vote. Since this is a budget amendment, I will do a roll call. Trustee Sikkenga.
I have one question, though, before it gets that okay. So, so, so did you assess, so this is a budget increase, right? So we're increasing the budget. And, but it still fits within our operating revenue.
It, yes, we, I've actually asked a question. We're working with Kim. I have a question about one of the transfers for our operating revenue. So right now, if you look at the report from that clerk Stambuellis has in here, the operating revenue is about $50,000 over the, I'm sorry, the operating expenditures are about $50,000 over the, the revenue estimate. However, I believe that we have that incorrect because of a, a transfer between funds. The transfer to open space that's included in the budget is a little over $280,000. And so I'm working to resolve that.
Okay.
So I, I believe so, yes, is the answer to your question.
So there is, so when you're, when you're, just, I'm just going to repeat back what I think you just said. So, so the net of the operating, the budgeted. So, so the net of the operating, the budgeted revenue minus the budgeted expenses includes, in the general fund, includes a $280,000 transfer to the open space. So it's not, so we're not heading for any kind of structural deficit with this. We, we just, we just applied a $280,000 surplus to a transfer to the, to the open space fund.
I believe, um, I, I don't believe it's a, I, I don't think I would call it a surplus, but in the way that, that Rena said in the audit, we, you know, we planned for that spend, just like we are transferring the 7,600 to capital projects this year. It's the other financing line, and if you add that together, it's about $290,000, which I believe, and this is what I, I want to clarify, but means that once we've accounted for those transfers, then we are actually under by $180,000. But I do need to, I, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to say that for sure until I've been able to clarify and make sure that that's correct. Otherwise, we are at a point in the budget where the projections are, we would be over by about 50,000, which is from our expected revenue.
Okay. I would also note, though, that the, the forecasted additional revenue that Michelle is expecting to support the election costs doesn't drive a budget change. So we should be expecting more revenue than we have budgeted.
Correct.
So, so that.
By almost the same amount?
Yes.
If, if not, yeah.
Yeah.
By.
So even if you're wrong about that other unanswered question, to me, it sounds like, okay, we're still in balance, so.
Yeah, we are still very close to, to imbalance, and I do believe that the other question actually answers that, and we're probably even, even better, but.
Okay.
But I don't want to say that definitively until I can definitely know, so.
So with that, I go back to your earlier question, which is, how do I vote? And I vote yes.
Before, before we, I'll, I'll call the, the roll again, but are there any other questions or discussion, given that? Okay, Trustee Sikkenga.
Yes.
Trustee Sanders.
Yes.
Clerk Stambulis. Treasurer Metz.
Yes.
Trustee Abbott.
Yes.
Trustee Nolte.
Yes.
And Supervisor Scott, yes. The amendment is approved. We'll now move into discussion items, and we'll start with our Dexter Township Strategic Plan with Trustee Sikkenga.
Okay, so first I want to apologize to Clerk Stambulis and Trustee Abbott, whose names I forgot to delete from page 73, but I will do that. All right, I actually already have done it in the draft that resides on my computer. But what is, so what you see in front of you is, is the results of the last board meeting where we did some edits to those value statements. I ended up including the vision statement that was developed at the strategic planning session. Lonnie and I talked about it a little bit, and it seemed like the sense of the room was that that was really the best. I then met with the clerk, the supervisor, and the staff to go through the action items and prioritize the action items. And what you see is the end result of that, those, if you remember at the last board meeting, we talked about just calling out a few, a few action items, maybe combining some of the action items into, into larger items, not, not calling out so many details and picking the things that were the highest priority. So this is the result of that, and I think the, the thing that I wanted to note was that a lot of the language in here now says, consider that, or consider that, or consider this, or consider that, or make a proposal. So rather than we, I think we all felt that rather than committing ourselves to some of these, these action items, we needed to do a little bit more study first. And so the, the language reflects that, it reflects kind of room to, room for study. And then, and then whoever's in charge of these action items will come back with, with a, with a, either, with a recommendation to either move forward or not move forward, and if we do move forward, how should we do it? And so I don't know if you guys want to just take a chance, take, take a moment just to read through, and I'm talking about pages 74 and 75 in your packet, and give any comments, anything that you think should have, should, that, that's missing from here that you wish was here, anything you, you think needs to be changed or removed. And other, if, and once we're satisfied, or I have a sense that everybody is satisfied with this list, the next step would be to identify who's going to be responsible for each of these action items and place it on a timeline. And just a reminder that this is a three-year plan because that's our terms of office. So our terms of office will end in three years after, uh, next month, and so. So it's a, you know, we're not doing all of these things next month, we're doing them over the next three years. So any comments?
Any, anyone have comments?
I, I have a comment, which is, I think it's beautiful. I think it's, I think it was a collaborative effort. It, you ran a really nice workshop, and then we re-looked at it. And I, I was reading it today, and I was like, this is dynamite, I want to live here. So I really like it, and I hope to get involved in some of the action steps as I can.
I like it, too.
Additional. Additional comments or questions?
I think it's great. Appreciate all the hard work you put into this.
Yeah, some of the language is very beautiful. And Lonnie promises me that it's going to be, he's going to do a beautiful design, too, because we do have a lot of beauty in Dexter Township. So there'll be images, photos and images.
I do have one question, though. Do, so on cleanup day, I always bring my batteries. Like I save up, like my double As, my triple As, my Ds, and I just bring a box. Are we not already including batteries in cleanup day? Or are you just being very kind and generous? The clerk being very kind and generous and takes the batteries for us and recycles.
And the scrap metaler takes the car batteries, large batteries.
Yeah.
The scrap metaler takes.
We don't have an official.
We don't have an official?
What we talked about with this, as we talked about it in the office, is that maybe in, in some other communities, we've seen drop boxes for batteries that could stay in the lobby or things like, same thing with like prescription drug return boxes, those kinds of things, looking into those types of programs as well.
It's great. Well, I just want the clerk to know, I appreciate her then, because I thought we were allowed to bring them. So every year, I bring a big box of batteries.
Michelle knows. Yeah, she's still, she's, she's waiting for your next, your next box.
Yeah, Sam Dale is bringing another little.
Yeah, what time does cleanup day start on Saturday?
You'll be getting emails in a matter of. I'd like everybody here by 8:15, 8:30, so we can have a meeting and get everybody.
We'll make, yeah, we'll make sure we add a a note at the end as well. Other questions? Comments, concerns about the strategic plan?
Can I, can I just extend the question to, to Sam, too? Because, you know, some of these action items will accrue to you. Did you have any comments or questions about the plan as presented?
I mean, nothing further, I think, I think was covered in that, that meeting.
Okay.
I think it's aggressive, as we have been for years, and our terms being more aggressive, huh?
I think it's assertive.
Okay.
Did you, did, did everybody notice that Chelsea is, is hoping to, to take over a little bit of Sullivan Township, I think?
Yeah.
So it's good that we have a charter township question, I think. Right, okay, the next steps, and we need to figure out what's going on. So if anybody's interested in getting involved in any of these particular action items, please, please reach out to me, I'll probably email all of you and say, hey, let me know if you're interested in, in, in being, being the lead on any of these.
Great. Thank you very much for all your work, Karen, this is, it is great, it looks wonderful. Moving on in the agenda to our next discussion item, which is the resolution on RFP preferences. I know I put in my report last month that I would bring this forward. Don't want to spend a ton of time on it tonight unless people have questions or comments, but also wanted to just say, you know, that I welcome any feedback, if you have suggested changes, those kinds of things. If you have them tonight, I'm happy to take that and write them down. If you want to email me, you know, feel free, and we'll bring it back for approval or as an action item at the next meeting. This is intended to be a way for us to, I, to clearly identify our preferences in the RFP process. As we've gone through some of our larger RFPs this year, we've had lots of discussion about, you know, we wish we had said that we preferred local, or we, you know, maybe looking at municipalities close to us, they're doing things like preference for prevailing wage or living wages. We've often had those discussions, but absent any type of policy, when we review those bids, none of that has been included. So wanted to put something out there for everyone to react to that would allow us to, to add that type of criteria anytime that we are doing competitive, a competitive bid process. Questions?
I have, I have thoughts about this. And basically, I, I believe that we shouldn't say that in all competitive bidding and RFP processes, Dexter Township shall apply preference points or evaluation weight for contractors. I think that, that we should build in, it should be, I think everything prior to that is okay. I mean, these are statements of preferences and our priorities, but to require us to do it for every RFP through this, I, I, I think that that is constraining us unnecessarily. And I have a couple of, I, I actually made some notes about this, believe it or not, I actually had to analyze this on, analyze LBE policy on behalf of a municipality one time. So, so a, a few questions, well, and I, and on that topic, I would say that LBE preferences are often considered onerous both by bidders and by the municipalities that have to implement them because it's very hard to collect these criteria and then assess its, its correctness. Usually, an LBE preference is put in place as a policy matter because of the economic stimulation that it's bringing to the municipality. That's not the case for us because we don't have commercial activity here. And, and I wanted to just comment that I don't believe that any of, like, I, I, so for, for, most of our contractors are professional service contracts, and those are not selected primarily on the basis of cost. So if we're going to implement this, with this shell language for our professional services contracts, virtually none, with the exception, I think, of Barry, of our current professional services contractors would qualify for the, for, for preference points because none of them are, are adjacent. So adjacent is very, that's very restrictive, that language in there, that says that, that it's either Dexter Township or adjacent municipalities. And most of our adjacent municipalities don't have much commercial activity. So, so if we ended up with, so that basically gives preference points to SiO businesses that are located in SiO Township, in, in my, in my reading of this as written. I would also say that as written, none of the bidders on the, on the single hauler would have qualified for local business preferences. So Stevens, LRC, you know, all of them, none of them are adjacent. So, so, and then the last thing I would say is that there is a fiscal impact. I mean, that, there's, I mean, you can imagine my wonky brain is like full of all kinds of information, and I don't want to share it all, but, or I don't want to, I, I'm struggling a little bit to pick through what's relevant. But I would say that it, it, that there was a little bit of a reaction last month to my idea of, of charging an extra $2 every three months for people, for customers of the single hauler who elect a second, who take a second can. And that's very, very minimal fiscal impact, $2 every three months, that's 67 cents per household. Something like this would, would, if it, if you shaped the language so that it, it impacted the single hauler bidders, the cost per customer
Would skyrocket.
would be more than $2 every three months. So, so there's, so there's, there's, there's fiscal impact here, there's operational impact, there's impact on the bidders themselves. And, and I'm not sure that it would really impact us in the real world with the actual contractors that are on the table for us. And for all of those reasons, I think, I think the intention and the, the sentiment is awesome, and I support it and I'm behind it, but I think that we should build into the language of the policy discretion for us to, so encouragement to consider these for, for each significant RFP, but discretion to not do it if we deem that it's, that the costs outweigh the benefits.
Trustee Nolte?
I agree, we haven't talked about this, but I agree 100%. And I think single hauler is a great example. And in theory, to be local would be great. But when you look at the practicality of some of the bids, if we do award systems on these kinds of criteria, it could end up financially impacting us a huge amount. If we had, in the, in the bid process, if you're looking strictly at a local identity type of situation versus a national, there's financial ramifications as to cart cost and other hidden costs that the average person doesn't see that could impact the township's bottom line. And some of the single hauler bids, some of them wanted the township to buy all the carts. Well, that's, you know, what was it, $400,000 or something? So it, it has to be, I agree with the intent, as Karen does, but to put it in writing that we're going to put added weight towards this, I think we really have to look at both sides of the equation and whatever the RFP is.
I, I, I don't disagree with, I, to me, that was why I added the section that said, this resolution does not guarantee award to the highest preference bidder if it fails to meet technical or quality requirements. Because to me, having a preference and giving points for a bidder that is local, you know, doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to go with it. Like, I, I think, I, I hear those, those things, that it could drive the cost up, but I, I do think that's a, I guess, maybe I misunderstood. I thought our point was if they were local, employed Dexter Township residents, met quality of life or environmental standards, the things that are listed here, that maybe we would give preference over. What I heard in the argument was, well, this is the lowest price bidder.
But what is that preference? Is it a 5% preference? Is it a 10%?
Well, I, I mean, I, well, well, I guess the question, is this, is this, is this about all of our contractors? Takes, because, because, because we have many small businesses like Rena, Chris, Raina is our assessor, who we all love, Kim Haynes, you know, these are, these, Megan, I mean, Carla Wardman, Bodman, these are all south, small companies that, that are located in southeast Michigan. But they don't, but they wouldn't qualify according to the language of this as written because they're not, they're not local enough to be, to be captured.
Well, it would just mean that they didn't get a preference point. I guess I'm.
I don't, I don't understand.
But, but then, but then, I, I feel like if it doesn't apply to anybody, it's kind of like the short-term rental. If nobody can qualify, what's the point of having a policy that no one can qualify for?
But do we, I, I guess, because you're asking the question. So we're asking them to state if they, if they qualify. Because we're not going to say you can't, no one says you can't bid if you're not a.
No, but. What percentage of, if somebody, let's, we're taking four bids and four people, and four people are local, or three people, what is the percentage, what is the weight factor that these preferences gain? I mean, is there, if you, three points, is that worth $10,000? I mean, what's the financial line that you give a preference that's going to cost you maybe a little more money? It's, I get the intent, but I don't get the practicality of it.
And that's not my point. My point is, we've, we've written a policy, and now, and now, because we have this policy that requires us to put this into every RFP. that requires us to put this into every RFP, you guys now all have to develop a system for collecting this information, evaluating the information to make sure it's correct. We're requiring bidders to reveal confidential information, which many don't want to do. You know, many, many bidders don't want to tell you what they pay and all that kind of stuff. So we're making it more onerous for the bidders, making it more onerous for the staff. But there really are very few businesses that, that can provide any of the services that we are asking for that exist out there in, in Dexter Township or in the adjacent communities. So we've created an onerous process that no one can really qualify for. So, so to me, it's better to have a more broadly worded policy that says, we really want our bidders, we really want to favor small businesses, we want to favor local businesses, we want to favor businesses that pay prevailing wage. And so when it comes time for us to issue an RFP, this board commits considering whether there's a meaningful way to include criteria around those topics in, into the RFP without specifying the amount, the, the, without being too specific in, in our legislation about how we're going to do it, when we're going to do it, or, you know, so that, that's, that would be my recommendation.
So you'd rather do it RFP by RFP, like individually?
Because we do so few, you know, and, and, and some municipalities, and I think this probably would make more sense for us, have, if, if they're trying to encourage local businesses, they don't say, if they're like us and there's very little commercial activity, instead of saying the bidders should come from Dexter Township or adjacent areas, they get, maybe they get a half a point if they're within 200 miles, one point if they're within 100 miles, two points if they're within 50 miles, and three points if they're in Dexter Township or something. Because then that would, that would sweep in some of these, these, these single, single haulers. But like right now, none of the single haulers would even qualify. So we would have created this process, onerous for the bidders, onerous for us, and then we would disqualify everybody, which reminds me of the, that's why I mentioned the short-term rental.
Except that, I mean, I, I don't want to sound like combative about it because I don't, but you keep saying things like disqualify. This is not saying that they can't. This is just that you don't get, so if none of them, if none of them are local, then no one gets a preference point. If one of the four are local, they would get a preference point. So it's not that you're not able to bid or that you're not allowed to, or that you're, that you're disqualified from bidding. It's that you're not getting the preference of.
And I don't mean you're disqualified from bidding, you're just disqualified from the, from the LBE. You, you don't qualify for the LBE. So we've created a process that is meant to encourage local business enterprises, but it doesn't really encourage local business enterprises because, because it's written in such a narrow way.
Okay. I don't think, I, I think we can continue to work on the language. I don't think I understand why, if there is a business that's within the township.
But there isn't a bit.
That you're, I mean,
But, but, but.
There, there was for lawn care. There is for, I would consider our, our new tech provider that we just switched to.
Because.
Is in Sci-O. They're, they're local. We've, so maybe, I mean, yeah, maybe not for single hauler trash, but I, I think there are examples of, of local bidders.
And the reason why this came up was because of, for instance, a tree trimmer. There was one that was local and unfortunately that person didn't get that bid. So I, I understand what Supervisor Scott is stating. I mean, pretty much anyone can bid, but we're encouraging local companies to bid. And if they fall in that category and they fall in that price point, that's wonderful, but it's just really encouraging local businesses, entities to actually come and bid.
I agree with the intent, but can I ask why the tree trimmer didn't get, why the local person? Was it a price issue? Was it an insurance issue? Was it a pay issue? Was it a staffing issue?
I mean, absent any kind of preference criteria are, the, the board's decisions have largely been just the cheapest bid. I mean, we've discussed, but almost, I can't think of, I can think of one with other criteria, like with other criteria there. But, so yeah, they, it was that we went with the lowest cost option for the tree trimmer.
It had to get done. We didn't have time to come to the board to say.
I'm not fighting any of that. I'm just saying, most of our RFPs, I don't think it comes down to the lowest bidder. I think there's so many variables to choosing a time schedule, the insurances on all of our things. I don't know if this solves, I believe in the intent to hire local and to keep it, but I don't know if this solves that issue.
I think we can probably stop discussing. And, and all I'm, all I'm recommending is that we be a little more, is that you give yourself a little more leeway to, 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 so I like the whole front part of it that describes that the whereas is I really like, but the be it resolved, and it's the shall clause that I, that I suggest be.
Disappear.
Not disappear necessarily, but, but just like we did with the action steps where we just changed it to, let's consider, let's, let's consider these, but consider whether these criteria can be, can make sense for this. It's giving, giving the executive team the latitude to say, well, maybe with the assessor service, you know, maybe we don't, maybe it doesn't make sense in this case. Or maybe we, maybe we want to make the criteria a little bit different that, you know, for, like, maybe if it's a single hauler, we want to have a staged, we, we want to have, have the criteria for local be a little more broadly defined so we can sweep in small Southeast Michigan companies that aren't right in Dexter or just giving you guys a little bit of flexibility to, to, to shape the RFP to capture, to capture the intent.
And in selecting of the bidders.
I think if we, I mean, I'm fine with removing the word shall, if that's, that's where we're starting. I, I guess, and Karen, I'd be happy to have some suggestions from you on this, but that, to me, what you're saying is what I tried to capture in the Township Supervisor, their designee shall establish standardized scoring guidance and weighting to accompany each RFP or bid solicitation. So that to me was, we're figuring out for each RFP what those look like and, and being able to put it out with the.
Well, but in the, I think you define local as being in Dexter Township and adjacent communities. That was one thing. I mean, there's a few in there that are very, that I think should be added. To be a little bit, to be a little bit more, to, to allow for a little bit more judgment.
Okay. Any additional feedback that folks want to share? And definitely, yeah, if there are wording changes or things that people have suggestions, feel free to email. And we'll drop them in for the next draft for when the board reviews. All right. Hearing no further discussion, we'll move into committee reports. Is there anyone who wanted to speak to their report? I just want to highlight a couple of things in my report. We did get, I misspoke earlier, the, I thought it was 6.8% for revenue sharing. It's 6.3. That's in my report. We also will need to start our discussion around the WWRA Special Assessment District for the green bins that are in the parking lot. Both the clerk and I highlighted that in our reports. And then I just wanted to mention, I know that we had Mr. Cronberg speak at public comment. I, I did address a little bit about the incident with the crash in my report. I've been in contact with one of the trustees in Ann Arbor Township, and we are trying to look into, the, the Director of Planning and Zoning has reached out to the Township Attorney, and we're trying to figure out ways that we can compel race organizers to make sure that, that folks are safe. If there's a way for the township to do that, one of the, the complicating factors that we're, that we're working through, frankly, with, with legal is, as you heard, it was a 71-mile race, went through four counties. And so making sure that that coordination happens is also important. So we're trying to, to figure out.
When, when epic races and organizations such as that put on races in, where that begin, I guess when they begin in Dexter Township, do they have to come and pull a permit?
There's no, we do have special, special use permits depending on what that looked like for the race itself. There, that's not a category. But I will say that the other race organizers, including the one that happened in June, worked directly with the township, with the township, with the road commission, with the fire department, with the police. They were in contact. So they were not, they didn't have to do that technically. But the other race organizers that are doing these big events in the township have. This one did not. We, we had no idea. I know the, the sheriff's office has left, but my understanding is they, they were unaware because it was done through the City of Chelsea and the City of Chelsea Police, not the county. And the fire department was also unaware that the event was happening. So we're, we're looking in to try to figure out what's the best way to, to do that. We may come before the board specifically with that race organizer with a letter to them. If there's, if there's not a lot else we can do, just letting them know that, you know, that they really are going to have to change some things if they, that we don't, you know, don't approve of, of the actions that have taken place. Obviously, a very dangerous section of road that was left completely unattended.
I think that happened just by where I live out on Hankard. They're, they're crossing Hankard all the time to go from the.
Right. The podo.
Yeah, the podo. And it is, I mean, you come flying around those corners and all of a sudden there's three cones. Three cones isn't enough. More leeway because there's just a lot of races out there, whether they're hiking, whether they're road races, they're swimming, there's just, yeah, it's not good.
Other folks that wanted to highlight anything from their reports?
A question about the Planning Commission report, but Fletcher isn't here. So I just wondered, I, I noticed that I haven't seen what's going on with the corner of North Territorial and Dexter Town Hall Road in a while.
Well, I noticed that he listed, we haven't had an update on building permits. The last update was July.
Are you talking about the building?
I'm talking about the.
She's talking about the actual building.
Oh.
Or are you talking?
I'm talking about what's happening with it. Yeah.
The commercial property.
Yeah, the commercial property on that.
Oh, that.
No, I'm not, I saw Hillside Acres. I, I, believe me, I see them building.
I think it's just sales.
Yeah, I don't think anyone has, I, I know that there's been interest and folks come in and talk to Fletcher about different ideas. I don't believe, if, if any permits had been pulled, it would be in this.
There have been, no, nobody has busted a move on that at all.
Not that I, not that I know of.
Alicia, I'm not sure what you mean. Like on page 87, the zoning permits are listed, minor, major and minor.
Yeah, I, I see that. I, right here where it says approved projects, Hillside Acres, it says. Yeah. No, that's as of, as of the end of July 2025, 15 zoning permits for single family homes have been issued. I was just curious, August and September, I was just curious.
I don't think, I think those 15 are actually for this whole, like I, there are not 15 homes that have, have certificates of occupancy. I think they pulled, they pulled all 15 of the ones that they were building to complete. And then they, it'll be on a rolling basis, but those.
The sewer boards, they've pulled a few more for tap-ins. Okay. I think they're up to 18 or 20 tap-ins. Okay. So.
So those should be the next part, should be the.
Yeah. Once they pull for the sewer, then they start.
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing from Fletcher's report that I did want to highlight for everybody as well is that we will have a zoning ordinance change request. It came from the Planning Commission. It's a change in the length of electronic sign. How long an electronic sign has to display a specific image. If you didn't notice it in your packet, we currently require it to, to stay for an hour before it can change. And the change that was recommended by the Planning Commission is to change that to 30 seconds. We are.
It's a huge.
We are drastically, if you look at, you can see all the different jurisdictions. And the longest aside from us being an hour was two minutes in Sci-O Township. There are some that are as short as, as six seconds in Lyndon Township. So Fletcher did a great job, I think, of laying out, or the, the Planning Commission, I'm not sure who made this chart, but of laying out all the surrounding municipalities. So if you have questions about that, I know that we didn't, it's in a report this time, but we will be asked to take action on it at the next meeting since the Planning Commission already sent over the recommendation. So if you have questions, please reach out to Fletcher before the November meeting. Anyone else that would like to talk about their reports?
Well, I don't want to talk about my own report, but I did want to make a comment about bicycle safety and road safety, which a couple of things. One is, we did have the issue of road safety arise in the strategic planning process. And I don't know if everybody in the audience knows, but I think the board is aware that we, we made an investment in the planning of a, a trail that will connect Hudson Mills to Stinchfield Woods. And that, and we've done a lot of work with Hudson Mills and with the county park system to kind of, to, to try to move that forward as best we can. And last I spoke with the Here on Waterloo Pathways Initiative, I did think that there was some funding in place for that. I mean, it wouldn't help with a, with a crossing at Toma and North Territorial, but at least, but right now there's no safe crossing of North, on North Territorial for pedestrians or bicycles. And if, if that, if we have an opportunity to help move that project forward a little bit, if they come forward and ask us for a little bit of funding or whatever, I, I, I think that's a project we've been involved in and shouldn't lose track of because I think that will help with bicycle safety if we can get that safe crossing over North Territorial in place.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions, comments about reports? All right. Hearing none. We also have the data and performance metrics from the fire department and the sheriff's department. I just want to highlight that the sheriff's department report is a new format. So encourage folks to, to check that out. If you have any questions, let me know. They are eager for feedback as we go to our police services meetings every couple of months. And our next one is in November. So if you have any feedback about that report, just feel free to pass it along to me or Sam. And we'll now move into our second call for public comment.
Good evening. My name's John Lasecki. I'm, I live here in Annapolis. I just have a question in regards to, what is the status with the single hauler process? I thought a decision was going to be made in October. Is that? Is this the right format to ask this question?
We typically don't do questions and answers for, for, no, no, no. You can ask the question and typically what we'll do is we'll, we'll make sure we have your contact info and respond. Although I do believe that we may have a small update in the next section of the agenda that will answer that question for you. No, 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 that was perfect. That was perfect. It just so happens that I think your question's going to be answered. Sometimes that doesn't happen and we respond via email after the meeting. Yeah. Any other members of the public for a second call for public comment? All right. Hearing none, we'll move into other issues, comments, concerns of board members and staff, and we'll start with trustee Nolte.
Let's talk single hauler. We were hoping to have it in this month and obviously we did receive a proposal back from Waste Management, was it last week? And Karen and I are trying to get a meeting on the books. We had one scheduled for Thursday, which I don't know if you saw in my email, I have to cancel.
Oh, I didn't see.
You didn't see that? Yeah, I just did it today.
I was going to say that we have a meeting.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. So hopefully next week we'll address it. They came back with a different format. There's a lot of comments on it. We have a lot of feelings about it and we have to go back and discuss it with them. So we did not make the October deadline.
Yeah, they had some, they had some unexpected, I think, absences and things. They, they, they were delayed in getting the next draft of the contract back to us. So we just got it a couple of days ago and weren't able to turn it around that quickly. So, so we'll, we hope.
We're shooting for November.
We, yeah, we're shooting.
And I, I will say, it's my intent that we will, that we will have something in November, that we will, we will take action. It's my intent that we will, that we will have something in November, that we will, we will take action. I, we've been down the process, we're being very deliberative, as we've talked about before. And, but we're not going to continue to wait forever with Waste Management. We will get what they send us and we're going to make a decision. Because the residents deserve that and frankly, all of the bidders and, and all of the work that's gone into it from the trustees. So yes, apologies that we don't have it on this agenda. We pulled it because we didn't have the, the contract to do that and we need, I think as I've said several times, the devil's in the details. And so we don't want to move everything forward until we have all of those details worked out, so.
Absolutely.
But my intent is that it will be an action item on the agenda in November.
With the decision. From my viewpoint. The other thing is cleanup day is Saturday morning. Residents are welcome from 9:00 AM to noon. Volunteers, please be here no later than 8:30 so we can get cars parked and get everybody at the proper stations. It looks like good weather, so that's good.
I'm bringing hats.
You always do. Not going to wear. I will say, the tire truck is going to be delivered Friday morning. Did he copy you on that, Sam? I can't remember. Friday morning, the tire truck will come in, the 48 footer, and WWRA will be putting some things in it Friday. So don't be surprised if you see that. But that will come here Friday morning and leave Monday morning. And other than that, it's pretty much the same as last year.
And a reminder to everyone, anyone who's listening, the regular bins from WWRA for recycling will be removed for the entire weekend. So we always have a lot of people that get a little angry because they drive up on the weekend. Because of all the space it takes for cleanup day, those bins will be removed. They should be back on Monday.
Right.
Sorry, I didn't mean to just go over your report.
Fair enough. A lot of things I take for granted doing this for citizens.
People have to go to Workner Road, right?
If they want the green.
They want to drop off.
They want green bin, they have to go to Workner this weekend.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Abbott.
Did I notice that the suggested donation vehicle changed from $5 to $10? It's a good idea to let people know that. I'm actually really looking forward to it. I hope we see everybody there because it's a, it's a fun way to help the residents and it's a great way to connect with people.
And the donation did increase because we lost funding. We lost grants, or Public Works lost grants that used to support us, so. Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Treasure Met?
Can I say one other thing? Broadband, those two crazy little roads. Jeanette Drive got hooked up this month.
Yay.
And Tanglewood Trail is due to be done by the end of the year, so hallelujah. Cross that one off the books.
Wow. Treasure Met?
I guess just a question back. Karen, I did have a resident come in, they're like, does it matter how many times? They said they have like three truckloads of stuff and.
As long as it's not construction waste.
Right.
You know?
That's, that's kind of what I explained, I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah. We, we have a lot of repeat people, but.
We had seen that.
Yeah, and there's people that we've had to. But yeah, as long as it's not construction waste. We got into more in that when we were doing the mattresses and couches and stuff like that.
I just want to say one thing real quick, I'm sorry, I know I should have said it sooner. That was a very nice shout out to you from the auditor, and I just want to tell you that I also appreciate what you're doing.
Yes, it's, it's a learning curve, I'll tell you that.
I didn't want it to, I didn't want it to be swept over too soon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Clerk Stambly.
Not much, other than the public accuracy test will be October 27th at noon, Monday. If anyone would like to attend, everyone's welcome. And just remember to vote on November 4th for the WISD School Milage. And I will bring the styrofoam trailer and have that.
Have it in position.
Yes.
Good.
Trustee Sanders.
No, no other concerns, thanks.
Trustee Sikenga.
I just want to vote for the public accuracy test. It's really fun to, to see it. And I think if anybody feels, has questions about the accuracy of the vote or, or how the whole thing works, that it's a great time to come and see for yourself and really you can participate. I mean, Michelle and, and Nick are great about explaining everything and letting you actually feed ballots and then understanding how the whole system works. So, so anybody that hasn't, anybody listening and anybody here who hasn't gone to the public accuracy test, it's, I think it's really a great, a great thing.
Michelle?
Monday, the 27th.
Okay.
At, at noon, Monday, the 20, October 27th at noon.
Did you find your workers? Pardon? Did you find your workers?
For all you conservatives out there, we could use a couple extra Republicans if they would like to be an election worker. We are okay, but it's always nice to have a couple extra.
And what is the deadline to drop off absentee ballots?
You can drop them off on the day, until 8:00 PM, 7:59.
And can we still get them? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great.
Great.
All right, anything else? Yes. Anything? Sam?
Just a reminder to people that the submission window for the Park Pass program is closing on October 31st. So if anybody still needs to submit for Park Pass, we need to do it by then.
Great, I have just.
Was that audible to the public?
We'll just repeat what Sam said from the back of the room. The Park Pass program is closing submissions on October 31st. So if you've not yet submitted, please make sure you submit your request. All right, I have a, a couple of things. I also wanted to thank the Treasurer's Office, we didn't get a chance to do this at the last meeting, for what was a hectic day of last tax collection last month, and the Clerk's Office for what has been a number of hectic days as they prepare for the second special election of the year. The office has been buzzing the past few days, so thank you to both of them. I also just want to say that we've, a, a big thank you to Sam as well in the transition for BlackRock. I will say that they, their customer service has been impeccable as we've gone through this transition and helping us get everything set up. They are, they are responding to tickets within 30 minutes, is probably the average response time. It has, it has really been a great transition. And so thank you to them, but also to Sam, who is doing an enormous amount of work as everyone tries to figure out all the, the little bugs that happen when you change over everyone's computer on basically the same day. And then just also wanted to echo the Clerk's encouragement for folks to vote, but also to, to Trustee Sanders' point, asking about absentee ballots. Also to encouraging folks, if you are interested, you can still sign up for the permanent absentee ballot list as well. It used to be that you had to send in an application every time. Now you can sign a single application and be put on the list so that your ballot is automatically sent to you. And it definitely saves some manpower from the township when those go out automatically. So with that, if there's nothing else, with no further business, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:19.